Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudak. The record of let clerk, clerk Segres is in attendance, treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman is absent and supervisor Williams.
Good evening. Call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move.
Good. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a single item on the agenda this evening and that's the millage, residential road projects and update. And we've got with us this evening Director Jade Smith and Bill Surcheck and from their office Kristy is joining us and Wendy Trumbull, finance as well. Jade, would you go ahead and lead us into it?
Sure. Great. Thank you. Thanks for all being here. We're going to go through some quick slides, give an update on some of the road projects that are occurring now and then go through some of the matched. We had a closeout of all of the associations that put in a request to have some of the matched dollars put forward. So we'll go through some of that too in preparation for next week's board meeting.
And then if this is acceptable to the board, what I'd like to do is have you run through the presentation and everybody please hold your questions till after the presentation is completed because we're hoping that some of the questions may actually be answered in the presentation itself. And then after that, then we'll go through and for public comment or questions and then the board will finish up with any final questions or comments. Is that reasonable?
Yes, sure.
Very good. Okay. Jade, is that okay with you?
Absolutely. Yep. That's how I had it set up. So that'd be great.
Perfect.
So again, like I said, we're going to go through some of the unmatched projects, the matched projects, talk about Ford Road, Ridge Road, Wayne County projects, and then just have some open discussion at the end. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over, especially with me being somewhat new. I'm going to turn it over to Bill to talk about the unmatched millage project that are going on right now.
All right. So as you're probably aware, we kicked off the unmatched program in this year and the idea is to work on local subdivision roads and address drainage and catch basin. We came up with this last summer to try to hit the low areas of the sites in all the different subdivisions and those tend to be the more difficult areas when you get into drainage and catch basin fixes. So we are currently kicked off with our contractor Great Lakes. They're working north of Ford. I expect them to be working on that until we can't pour anymore, possibly until October. We've got a lot of work lined up. The 2020 unmatched work will continue. We'll probably have an unmatched program for several years, given the size of our community. And next year, when we start to have some of the HOAs participate, we'll be able to get some economy of scale by doing some of our unmatched work on the drainage and catch basins versus the other matched work, which may end up being long stretches of road. But the only thing I would say, like it says up there on the PowerPoint is if you hear any questions, any concerns, we're out, our inspectors and engineers are out in these subdivisions every week and definitely forward them on to us. You know, we get to know anybody working, anybody living near the roads we're working on. So and I know that certainly many of the electeds have had a lot of questions from residents. Feel free to send them on down, take pictures. Any questions you have, we've certainly talked to quite a few of you over the past few months on how this work is being done. But that's where we are with unmatched. We intend to do that until we can't pour anymore and it gets too cold. So this question of what type of work are we doing, the goal of our overall, one of the overall goals is to preserve the pavement we have. It's a network that goes back probably 60, 70 years. We've got some pavements, for instance, Salts and Hanford is a great example where we are preserving those existing pavements that are some places pushing 40 years. As you may recall from our education efforts last year, all the literature we've sent out to the various HOAs, we have assessed the entire community, including all the major roads, the public roads and the private roads, using a Pacer system, pavement assessment, looking at each segment of road and giving a rough idea of is it a brand-new road or is it completely destroyed at the bottom. The rating system, one to 10, you've probably heard this a number of times over the past years, is it's not a be-all and end-all. It gives you a tool to look at a large network and look at where are the good areas and where are the bad areas. It is not a system that gives you exact details in front of your house or in front of your neighbor's house. So pavement preservation is the goal. We added a quick, quick and dirty graph showing how a pavement ages. And you see it slopes off as the pavement ages and many of our roads are somewhere in the middle here, good to fair. And we're going to be doing techniques like you've seen this summer where we can bump that line up a little bit and get 10 more years out of the road. That's a huge benefit. Lilly Road, I would call out, is a great example. Lilly, we all drove it. The section of Lilly we did south of Ford, it had a lot of deterioration. So on Lilly, we took out some of the area underneath that was particularly bad. We repaired that and we did an asphalt overlay, as you've all seen. It's finally finished. That's the center picture. I'm sure you've all seen how Lilly looks now. We're actually out doing a few extra repairs around Salts right now, but that project is essentially done. Another type of process we've been doing is shown on the left and that's what we've seen on Canton Center and what you've seen on Salts and Hanford. It's panel replacement. So those are concrete roads with the big square and rectangular panels. We're replacing entire panels or portions of panel. And although Hanford and Salts does look a little bit more like a patchwork, for a 40-year road, we're going to get quite a few more years out of it. And it is not, is not meant to be an aesthetic fix. It's meant to keep those roads in good shape. Hopefully, we can get a few more decades out of them. The one on the right, I would point out, is Lot's Road. There's a section of Lot's Road north of Palmer that was particularly bad. We did a full reconstruct on that section. Very, very expensive when you're completely reconstructing a road. We took that down to the base and rebuilt it. There's another segment of Lot's north of there, closer to Cherry Hill, where we just did panels and selective replacements. But the one on the right was full replacement, quite an expensive proposition. And we will have more of those, certainly, but we're looking more towards pavement preservation versus full reconstruct. So those are three good examples of the type of work that's out there.
So that was, that was the unmatched projects that are going on currently. So now we're going to go into the matched portion. This is where there's been a process that's been set up. Depending on the contribution from the homeowners and the associations will dictate the size of the project and what the township's contribution will be. Obviously, the more that the associations could provide, being a larger project, we did, so here is a calendar or kind of a timeline of what's transpired and what will be transpiring in the next few months. Canton was accepting the applications until the end of July and we'll get into, we did receive 29 submissions and we'll get into those in a minute. Obviously, we're having this study session tonight, which is to hopefully set up and provide enough information to get an approval next week at the board meeting to move forward with the projects and start to plan for the 2020 construction season. Then in September, with the contracts in place and the board's approval, our engineers will work with the homeowners associations on drilling down more about the, on the scope and the details of the work. And then we'll send that out for design and bidding this winter. And then spring, summer will be the construction season next year. So these are, we have two pages, but we do have 29 submittals because there was, there was so much information, we put them on two slides. But these are in order that they came in. That was a decision that was made on the day that the applications were accepted. These are in the order that they are actually submitted to the supervisor's office. And with how much the association is contributing, how much the township will contribute, and then what the total project amount will be or contribution will be towards that particular association. So you can see that the total project amounts of middles were a little over $3 million. And of that, the township's contribution through the millage would be 2.6 million and the association's contributions would be just under a half a million dollars. The process that we are going through, just to kind of give everybody an idea of whose role is what, is the MSD administration has taken over the, facilitating all the communication. We'll be taking over the application submissions, many sort of map updates. Any sort of communication is going to roll through MSD administration where I think previously it was coming from the supervisor's office. Obviously, engineering with Mark and Charles and Bill, they will be the point, Mark and Charles will be the points of contact for the association specifically and work with them on coordinating the initial scopes and working through this process. And Spalding Detector, who does, we do have a representative tonight here, they are our contractor and they will be working with engineering on the designs permitting in the bidding process. And then obviously, the applicants. These are the associations and owners that have shown a willingness to put some money forward and be partners in this process. And then there's the board, which obviously, we're here tonight presenting all this to you and hopefully preparing for approval. This is the wrong version, so I apologize. But we'll roll with it. So the estimated annual budget is actually 1.6 and actually the handouts in the back are the actual correct one. This is the wrong one that's on here. So the estimated annual budget is 1.65 million. So for 2020 and 2021, because we're kind of, kind of lumped these together because all of those projects are obviously going to take us past the 2020 construction year. So we're looking at about 3.3 million dollar budget. And we're looking to bring that approval before the board at the August 27th meeting. And again, I outlined the timeline here just so that it's clear to everybody what's going to, what's going to transpire. Because when we bid these projects out and we get them in, we get the bids in, we'll then know exactly what the true construction costs are going to be. And that'll truly tell us which ones are going to be constructed in 2020 and which ones will be in 2021. And then this process will continue year after year for the next 18 years as we, as we move through this. And I do apologize for that being, and I will send, you guys all did get an email this afternoon with the corrected one. So there's more information on this form or on this slide that I just showed you. The one that we sent out, we condensed and it's actually easier to read. So refer to that one. So I apologize.
And a little delta between the numbers and you've got 3.3 combined, the two of 1.65 per year versus the 3.80,000. Is there some contingency between them?
So the applications, what was, I'll go back. So this 3.80,000 is strictly the project amounts because of the contributions we received from the association. That's just what we received. Though 3.3 is an estimated millage, that's the estimated millage revenue. So there is a, there is a delta in there, but we don't have the construction, final construction cost in either. So once that actually comes in, we'll be able to tighten up those numbers.
We're, you know, if you look at the 1.6 million dollar budget, it essentially works down to about half one year and half the next. And when we had that program about four years ago, we did, we did a very similar process entering into a contract with each of the HOAs. And we were very careful in that process to actually truncate the job if we ran over. I think we may have a little, we have a slightly different situation here because we have a multi-year program. We have a little more flexibility. We don't just have that single funding source. But essentially, it, we've filled the first two years, if that's a good way.
We did some quick math this afternoon and actually the way the slides broke down, these are the top 16 that came in. These are the ones that come in just at the 1.6 million dollars. So if everything comes in as planned, we would probably see these 16 projects be completed in 2020 and then page two would be carried over to 2021. So that is, so just to prepare you for next week, we will be coming before the board for the, to cap the project at 1.6 million dollars and not to exceed amount with the, these submittals up here. And we really don't want to limit ourselves to what we approve as far as which subdivisions we work with because if the construction bids come in under, we'll have the opportunity to have, to throw in another project. If they come in over, we may not be able to do number 15 or 16. So the RBA that's going to come before you is going to be with all 29 of these, but with a 1.6 million dollar cap for the 2020 construction year. And that moves us on to, so that was on the matched portion. And I know there's going to be lots of questions when we get towards the end, but we did want to move on and provide an update on Ford Road.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So we have on Thursday, our kickoff meeting with the state and their consultant, Tetra Tech. Tetra Tech has been retained through a long runout process with the state. They're a very well-known firm. They do a lot of state highway work. We'll meet down at the MDOT office in Taylor. It will probably be several hours with many people in the room, but at least we'll start the project. Tetra Tech, I anticipate, will have a many months period of gathering data and looking at all the existing conditions. And as we note on the PowerPoint, MDOT has committed to set up a project website. So we certainly get a lot of questions, when and how and what, how is this going to transpire? MDOT will be pretty good at communicating through their website as things change, as they move forward with design. We have made a special request and they'll definitely accommodate the fourth bullet item. We want to have a Q and A session with the DDA. You know, Ford Road is, is their, is our downtown and then we're going to wipe it out from sidewalk to sidewalk. Everything you see is going to be gone. And it's, there's a very high level of interest. What that means is we really have a clean slate. It's really going to be an unusual thing to be able to completely transform that corridor. So that special meeting with the DDA will be, will be very interesting. They have a lot of interests in what it's going to look like at the end. The walls will be gone. The poles will move. The berms and flowers, as you see them, will all go. It will all, all be changed. So that'll be very interesting. And I would also say, MDOT plans to have at least three public hearings. We will hold them at the summit. The first, the first one they're going to hold is actually going to be on detours and maintenance of traffic. So they're going to solicit public input on how, over a two-year construction cycle, how all of these cars are going to be rerouted and detoured. That's a, that's a huge issue. So that's actually going to be their first meeting. Then there'll be follow-on meetings on the actual design and how it, how the road will look. But we definitely want to get in early with the DDA, get the DDA's concerns out there. And you know, if you want to know what it's going to look like, the graphic we prepared a number of years ago is, is as close as we can get. We will be expanding it and pushing, pushing out on both sides. And it's, hopefully it looks pretty close to that.
It also puts more pressure on the DDA and cross-access pieces of it.
Yeah, yeah. The more we can get done now.
We've got the wall coming down behind the water's feasibility.
That's right.
And we've got one major parcel in between. It's our last stumbling block, which all of the way to Hagerty without going forward.
Yeah.
Put the pressures on to get that done.
Yeah. So this will be a long, long process, but.
This is, this is right at the beginning stages. Obviously, we have this meeting on Thursday, so that's going to tell a lot. And we're going to have some more temporary or some more preliminary timelines that we will forward on, but there's much, much more to come on this in the upcoming months. Ridge Road update.
Ridge Road. So Ridge Road, the design is complete. We got our permits in, from the state. In December, we've had, I did appraisals on right-of-way acquisition. I've had positive response from the property owners along that way. We strategized with our engineering firm about bidding and we'd like to avoid the November period when MDOT lets a lot of their projects. So we're shooting for September, hopefully award in October. And the critical date, the critical issue out there is trying to get the bridge completed over the Fellows Creek typically in the winter. If you recall several years ago when we did Lot's Road, it was on a similar schedule to get in there in the dead of winter and redo that fairly large culvert that you probably can't even see when you drive over it, but it's, it's a pretty big, pretty big culvert. Followed by paving, great establishment, everything next year. So you will see that moving towards bidding and hopefully an award this fall. We did award, I believe, last week, last board meeting, I had final design bidding and assistance for our engineers. So that's where Ridge Road is. Been spending a lot of time out there. I'm sure we'll spend a lot more.
And then the last thing on the agenda tonight is just an update on Wayne County projects.
Yeah. The Cherry Hill Road project, Canton Center to Hagerty, has been in, in the hopper for almost 15 years and it's finally coming to fruition. The county has divided that into two projects over a two-year cycle. The first they intend to do next year, that would be Hagerty, I'm sorry, Canton Center to Lilly. So that's about a mile and a half stretch. And then the following year, which would be 21, they would do the piece of Cherry Hill between Hagerty and Lilly. So that's a smaller piece, but it's a little more difficult of a piece. We're trying to enclose those large pipes on the south side of Lilly. If you've driven that area just past bushes, that's going to play out over the next year. Hopefully, we can get those enclosed. County is supportive. We're supportive. The other county work, we had lined up, we had spoken with the county at the end of last year. We had anticipated five locations where they were going to self-perform, doing some asphalt overlays. They have committed to do the two. Ridge was actually done, that small section of ridge over by Cherry Hill Village. Hanon, I don't believe they've, hit out to Hanon. We don't always get a lot of notice, but Hanon, north of Michigan, was also an area where the county had planned to do an overlay. The other three projects, for one reason or another, have, are not on the schedule for this year. Hopefully, they're just delayed till next year. Certainly be a subject of discussion next month. I'm, I'm going to walk in presuming they've just been delayed. So.
MDOT has committed to go, again, a little deeper to Compton.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. I haven't, haven't heard a whole lot, but.
We do have a meeting set up with the county for, I think it's in September.
Right after Labor Day, I think. Yeah.
So to talk about future projects, current projects. And so we will come back with an update on those. So with that, I know that was a lot of information in a very short period of time, but I know there's going to be lots of questions. So it's kind of by design that way.
At this point, why don't we invite the public and start in the front row and we'll just work our way back going left and right. Please come to the lectern over here if you have any questions. And we ask that you share with us name, address, not required, but we'd like to get it if you would. And then because this is really a question period time, this is an opportunity to ask any questions you may have. So Mr. Parker, would you like to lead us off?
Yeah.
You don't have to.
Bob Parker, 6806 Weathersfield. The only questions I really have is, you know, as we try to discuss the projects, I mean, we have a list of probably five or six, but a lot of that depends on, for example, Swanmere. If we get a waiver to put asphalt rather than cement, that may be a doable project. Again, Wayne County hasn't responded yet as whether we give a waiver or not. So some of our projects are kind of contingent on Wayne County working with us. So that's just a concern from the Sunflower area.
The list of the MDOT's purposes is we, you have a couple streets back and Sunflowers is one of them that is in terrific condition. Okay, very good. So with that though, it's currently a payment, right? And to replace that, it's a lot more expensive than the Hagerdian that's already.
Right.
And some of the questions can be a waiver from, which there are teams requesting a waiver.
We've actually talked about the idea of doing overlays. And I, I'm confident we'll be able to come to a conclusion on that. Just having talked to their engineers many times, the technique has actually been used by the county in other areas. So Bob, you do make a good point as far, you know, you're 16 miles of road, the largest subdivision in the state. So you're, you have many different areas to work on. How Swanmere fits in, hopefully we'll be able to answer that in the next month or so.
Lambeth and Swanmere, both of them are terrible.
Right. That, that cross-section, the crossroads and the two courts. But I would emphasize when we do enter into contracts with each of the HOAs, as we move forward with projects, we will work with each HOA and have a scoping meeting up front. Yours will be particularly challenging because you have so many roads. But I would also say you are one of the subdivisions who want to do a multi-year project. And we have several. So, so those initial meetings, when hopefully we have them in September, we'll have a lot, a lot more to talk about with you guys.
Yeah.
Playing out several years.
Yeah. That was just the one concern that, you know, we're, a lot of us depended on Wayne County working with us. That's all I have. Thank you.
And just to agree with Bill just said too, because these meetings are going to occur in September with the association. How do we get more approval? Actually start to move forward with getting the agreement signed between the township and the associations and then those meetings will occur.
Yeah.
Sheriff, would you like to speak to see, are you, are you here in support of the engineering team, sir?
I have to get up. Somebody called me. Sir, I got to go and say something.
There you go.
Steve Connell, I live at 7207 Emerson, just off Warren, and I represent Windsor Park subdivision. And Terry Joppa was going to be here, but he emailed me and said, can you come there? So I got to say something. So it's like, so you all know that Terry asked you that I was here. Now, I want to make it clear in my head that if, if the work is done like in Windsor Park in 2019, that we can't get anything done in 2020. Or can we apply for more? Because we're trying to work a way to get some more money in the pot. And, and it's, it's not, there are some places if we don't hit it in 2020 that are on our list. Like one place especially over the last three months has really gotten worse. And Terry added it to our list, but, but we'll see what happens. But.
I can take a stab at that if you like. You know, we do have, I think, three or four subdivisions who set up front. They wanted to do multi-year projects. Sunflower is one. And you know, I think, I can't speak for the board, I think we would entertain a multi-year project with, you know, with Windsor Park and others. I really can't say right now how it will shake out, but we, I can say we'll have 18 more years of this.
Well, I took a note of that, yeah.
Yeah. And we definitely like to do projects several in a row, you know, keep the disruption to multi-years. That, that's, that's not all I can, I can fathom right now.
Well, we want to get as much done as we can. And, and when this came up, it was a situation where we already allocated some money out of reserves for, to revamp playground equipment because it was, some of our stuff was really getting old. And with kids playing on it, you've got priorities. So, but we've, we've, I'm the budget guy, so I'm working a way to get, pile away some more money for the next few years until, you know, until we can't get any more.
Yeah.
Anyway, I spoke. So, thank you.
Yeah.
No, I'm thinking, no? Okay. Jumping back to second row, sir? And are you working currently in Canton Township on any roads? Or you don't have to.
Yeah, I can talk about that too. My name's Matthew Themes. I'm with 2430 Brookfield Street, representing Forest Brook. The presentation answered all my questions basically is coordinating the unmatched and matched monies will be, that was my question. So that'll be good. To leverage as much as we. we can. Lily Bridge, we're scheduled to set beams on that Friday, knock on wood. So that's moving forward, not as fast as we'd like, but it's moving forward, so.
I live in Glengarry Village. We had snaffoos getting our money during the July 4th break. And so my question, I guess I would ask is, or another consideration I would say is, you know, we ended up being 20th on this list, and we've got like a code red road, okay? So I guess I would just make that case is that I know you want to cut off based on people how they submitted, but I don't know the pazer rating of everything above here, you know what I mean? So like, we're actually seeing, you know, on Danbury, I can see the steel rods coming through the concrete that we patched over, you know, several times. So I just, yeah, so I'll make that point to you guys, is that I don't know, you know, I just think that, you know, we did all this on this pazer thing, I would hope that has some consideration. Again, we probably have two-thirds or three-quarters of Danbury that's got ASR, it's going to, and we were, we're going to be one of these groups that are going to want to come year after year after year till we get this ASR out of our sub. It's just a matter of the traffic on the road. So Glengarry Boulevard was the heaviest traffic, it disintegrated first. Danbury Road is a high-traffic road. It's gone now, it's five years later, now it's shot, you know? So that's kind of, that's the only question I have. My other point was, we mentioned about the $3.1 million and the millage budget, but the HOA contribution, how does that fact, I mean, it's 2.6 million on the submittals, right? And I thought it was 1.6 million is for residential roads. So the HOA contribution shouldn't go into, I would think, the amount that you would consider for your funding, right? I mean.
With the 1.6 million is the 30% of the millage going towards residential? And then the total project would include all the contributions from the HOA?
Yeah, I get that.
So that 1.65 million is what will be generated consistently each year?
Yeah, I understand.
And that's really our limit of spending each year.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
And again, I think that's why we're going to go and approve all 29 submittals and then wait for the bids to come back.
That's fine.
Because we really don't know what construction costs are going to look like. Yes, you are right. So the 2.6 is what's actually going to be used from the millage that was collected.
That's my point.
And the 500,000 will be contributed, I mean, does have a contribution and is a portion of the 3.1. So I understand, but we do have the 29 that we will be approving, I hope that they are approving. And then, and then once we get the bids back, we'll be able to tighten up those numbers. Yep.
Thank you. Sir? Michael? Sir? Back row?
Larry?
Please.
Praveen Ganthasala, I live in 1762 Crestwood Drive. I represent Brookside Five Village Subdivision. I want to understand how this multi-year proposal works. Do we need to keep submitting every year? Or if we have 20 houses and we are selecting only 10, so that 2021 we'll select only the remaining ones? Or, I know you answered like a little bit earlier, but I want to understand a little bit more.
So the applications are going to be available to submit on a regular basis every year? Are they going to be ongoing?
Right, and I think, for instance, you work with Dave Deam, right? And I know you participated in the program a few years ago. So how will we actually do that? Will we have a formal submittal next year, or will we do a supplemental submittal? One goal would be when we meet with Sunflower, Brookside Five, Fairways West, some of the ones who want to do multi-years, that initial meeting, hopefully in September with us and our consultant Spalding, we can talk about all those types of issues and really look at the problems in Brookside Five. And we can actually sort of get a rough cost of what that would be. Would that be a, would three years on Brookside Five be appropriate to do what we've already been doing out there? So I don't have a hard and fast answer, you know, will we, will we definitely schedule everything each year in a row? But I think those initial meetings is where we would flesh that out. I know that's a little vague, but we haven't really done this type of program with multiple years. We definitely have 18 years to do this, so.
So when you come to inspect our roads, you will give a quote, you will get a quote for the whole thing, whole subdivision?
Well, we actually know your roads quite well, you know, and we, from having worked out there a couple of years ago. And so I don't, Mark, I don't think it'll be a stretch to really take what we did a few years ago and extrapolate that out to your whole sub. We go through Brookside quite often. So we have a pretty good handle on most of these subdivisions.
So we know more in the next meeting?
Yeah, and I think that first meeting in September with each of the groups really will flush a lot of this out.
It will also be individual meetings.
Yeah, we want to meet with each HOA, a representative of the township, and a representative of Spalding. And it'll just be an open discussion, but we want to end up with a scope for the first year. And for the multi-year, we'll definitely want to discuss what is our concept for year two, year three? That's really what we have right in vision right now.
Good focus meeting, just the individuals impacted.
Yeah, yeah. We want, focused on Brookside Five, how long it takes, possibly onsite, possibly here.
Thank you. Sir? Okay. That concludes the public questions. Board comments? Questions, just please.
Thank you, Director Smith and Bill for your presentation. It was very informative. I just have a couple of questions. For the unmatched work, how many subdivisions were we able to do so far this year? And how many do we think that we're going to have left to do this year?
This year, we selected everything north of Ford.
Right.
And it's a lot of work. We know a lot of this, a lot of unknowns when we're digging. We have one now in Carriage Hills, where we're finding a little more than we thought. So we're doing 17 subdivisions north of Ford.
That's Windsor Park.
It's Windsor Park, sorry, we're in Windsor Park right now. We got started a little bit late, but I hope to be able to do that work through maybe early November, usually when everything ends. So 17, I hope we can get through all of them this year. When we had originally talked about this, say about a year ago, I thought, well, we do everything north of Ford and then everything south of Ford, but everything south of Ford is an enormous amount. So I anticipate this unmatched program will take several more years. You've got some very large subdivisions to the south. And I'll point this out, especially for Brookside Five, for Sunflower, others, you know, when we start looking at, say, Brookside Five, who is south of Ford, and we will have our unmatched program, looking at the drainage areas, coupled with commitments from Brookside Five. So we'll have a larger discussion and be able to, you know, to be able to do a little more, a little bit more economy of scale for anybody who's participating in the match. If you're not in the match program, we'll come in and just do the same things we're doing north of Ford. But I think this program will take several years.
Were we slowed down by the rain? There was a lot of rain this year.
Uh, no, we just didn't, we didn't get the bids out and awarded until June. It was, we were slowed down on the other projects by the rain, definitely.
Okay. Director Smith, you mentioned that you're going to take over communications for the program for the matched work. Will you also take over communications for the major roads when we roll that out again for 2020?
A lot of that is going to work through engineering because it works through our contractor as well. The reason we took over some of the matched communications is because that's working with the associations, working with the different private owners. And then we're the ones that are updating the maps every week in regards to the construction and the progress. So we'll be working on the website and being more active in all of that.
And you still have Kristin Thompson still involved in the overall communication as well. We're all different departments.
Right.
I just think it's easier sometimes for residents if they know who to go to for information, so.
Anything that comes in to us should.
Yeah.
And actually, just to expound on that, we are doing the communication now for the unmatched portion as well. So I guess it is rolling up through us.
And then in preparation for the Ford Road work, I know that we're trying to get a lot of the east-west roads in good condition, so when we have to do detours, do you think that that timetable is running smoothly, or are we on track for that?
Well, we have, some of the critical ones are going to be done this year and next. So Hanford Salts will be in good shape. Cherry Hill with the county projects over the next two years, that's going to be a major detour road. Warren, and areas of Warren that we're scoping out is critical. And also all the roads north-south.
Right.
We've got parts of Lily done. So hopefully in about a month from now, we'll have another study session on the major roads, and you'll see some of the methods on how we want to lay out the next two years of major roads. But you're right, a lot of it is geared towards a Ford Road Boulevard, and we want to be away from Ford when that starts. So that's really going to govern a lot of the next few years and how we pick these major road jobs.
Okay, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, I remember that Cherry Hill was scheduled for this year, did that get delayed?
It did.
Okay.
And broken into two pieces.
Okay.
Yep.
And was there any other Wayne County work that was done in Canton this year besides for the self-performed work?
They have the two self-performed and routine maintenance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Early on Warren Mall, they've done the bridge.
Yeah.
Oh, and the bridge.
Okay.
Actually, Lily Road Bridge is the biggest project here.
Yeah, that's a huge one, yeah.
Forget that.
All right, thank you.
Great presentation, thank you. You answered a lot of my questions and a lot of the questions the audience had, thank you. And Bill, I want to thank you, I've had a lot of residents come to my window and I send them to you, and you've spent a lot of time, so we all truly appreciate you, your patience in explaining to our residents. Just a quick question on the match again. You said that you're, are you done with Ford Road or almost, or north of Ford Road? I'm sorry.
No, we're just really starting, just the past month.
Okay, okay. So that, you think those will all be done by 2020 then to work for the?
I hope to get everything we planned on those 17 subdivisions done this year.
Okay.
But if it gets into, you know, construction usually stops right before Thanksgiving because of deer season, they lose a lot of crews. And I was talking to John before the meeting, and I don't like to pave when it starts to get cold, especially with asphalt. And I don't really like to do concrete work. So, you know, I'd rather, truthfully, I'd rather take the criticism of why didn't you finish this versus trying to do work in December. I just.
Have it undone.
It's about the material, it's about the road, you know, it's about the pavement.
Okay, yeah.
So they're moving fast, but we'll find things, and they're only going to move as fast as they can fix this stuff.
Okay. And then just the only other thing, I know when MDOT sets up that website, I'm sure we'll have a link, Canton will have a link that they can, okay, great. All righty. Well, thank you.
Melissa, would you like to say anything or ask any questions to the team?
Sure, thank you. I guess more for the audience and people watching at home. My name is Melissa Dobb, I'm the Wayne County Commissioner for Plymouth and Canton, newly elected in January. And I just wanted to say that the Department of Public Services is not under the commission side of the county, but I feel that it's important that I'm here because, you know, I am part of those decisions in approving the contracts for roadwork and definitely, you know, opening up the communication between the township and the county. So thank you for having me here today, I've taken lots of notes, and go back to the office and look into some of this stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ken Murray?
Sure, thank you. Thanks for the presentation, it was very informative. So it's going to be difficult deciding who, how to prioritize, and I noticed looking at the pazer, there's not a lot of failed roads, I don't see a lot of red here, but there is a lot of pink. So when you have a subdivision that wants a multi-year project versus one that, you know, how do you determine, are you going to use the pazer studies then to determine, hey, we have to put this one ahead?
Yeah, they, you know, as we enter into these contracts, they'll be similar to the ones we did several years ago. Certainly Bob and Sunflower, we're going to have a long discussion on how we lay out a multi-year program. Several of these are going to be quite easy because it's very straightforward. So it's going to be the whole range, but we, in the contract, we as the township are reserving the right to set that final scope of work. We'll get the input, but if there's a conflict, and there's certainly an area that we feel should be addressed versus another area, we are going to have that in the contract, it's going to give us the final say on the scope of work. So that's really all I can offer. Yes, many of these subs, you know, Windsor Park, Carriage Hills, they're quite large and complicated.
Yeah.
And many of them probably need multi-year projects.
Right, the pazer study is a great way to do it, I mean, we did the lottery before, but now that we have the actual engineering, that really helps, I think. So in terms of like the beams being placed for Lily Road Bridge, does that mean November's still a good timeframe for completion?
I don't want to jinx it.
It's okay, I'll say it, November, yay!
Is construction anything that happens?
Yeah, I know. So the drainage is going well north of Ford Road then?
Yeah, we're, you know, when you're digging up these sketch bases and you're finding some things, so.
Okay.
They're difficult projects, so that's sort of where the unmatched came from.
Now, the MDOT hearings, do they have dates approximately when we're going to have them?
No, we've got the first meeting Thursday to really get all the players around the table, so we'll find out much more information on Thursday.
So is it at those hearings that we should go in and ask for maybe conduits to be placed underneath the concrete at the major intersections for future technology, or?
You know, we'll probably get into quite a bit of those questions in our independent Q and A with the DDA, because we know those issues, too. And we actually have an enormous bank of conduits that exists that we built several years ago. But I think, was it you or Steve Snyderman, I think we were talking about the power lines north-south?
Yeah.
Which certainly were not buried. We're certainly aware of the, you know, the onslaught of automated cars, of 5G, of an enormous amount of data collection being done on our roadways. MDOT, we have had discussions going back several years with MDOT. We've been to their automated facilities, we've actually told them if you want to make Michigan Avenue, 275 and Ford our guinea pig for all of your equipment, you know? We have a community here with a lot of engineers and technical types, so they like that pitch. And it's very close to these R and D facilities, so how we implement those types of things or get them into a federal Boulevard reconstruction, I really can't answer that right now.
And I think we're obviously going to have a lot more internal meetings with MDOT as we move through the design over and above these, the town hall meetings. So if you have anything of concern or anything you'd like us to bring up, send that to us so that we can take that to our meetings and discuss with them. Because it's better to get it to them early than to get it to them later, so.
Right, okay, thank you. One question I get asked a lot is down by Beck and Cherry Hill. It looks like you were just doing crack sealing, but it looked, they're saying that there's cutting around the drain there, and they were asking if it's just doing crack sealing, why are we digging these additional holes?
Beck and Cherry Hill, we actually just completed, the whole south leg is all repaved. So, south on Beck, south of Cherry Hill is all completely redone. If you recall several years ago when they did the school projects in Widen Cherry Hill, they also did some work on Beck north-south. They added that extra lane to go straight north. So our project this year was to really clean up and fix some of the base areas on Beck south of Cherry Hill, and they just finished that Friday. Yeah, so that's, and we did do a few drainage improvements just on the sides of Cherry Hill.
Okay, maybe that was it then?
They might have seen some of that, yeah.
Okay. I said it's probably something with the drainage issues, but that's, okay, that sounds like that would be otherwise to crack seal and dig around.
We're doing crack sealing in a few areas, too, on Cherry Hill itself.
We did Palmer.
Palmer and portions of Beck north, they're mostly done.
And that big hole was fixed then?
We're working on that.
Yeah, the big hole south of Geddes?
Everybody falls.
Yeah, that.
That sounds like that'd be otherwise to crack seal and dig around.
Uh, we're, we're doing crack sealing in a few areas too. On Cherry Hill itself, today...
We did Palmer.
Palmer and portions of Beck north.
Yeah.
They're mostly done.
And that big hole was, is fixed then?
Uh, and the...
We're working on that.
Yeah, the big hole south of Geddes?
Everybody falls.
Yeah, that, uh, we, well, we put a lot in.
Don't know it's there till you hit it.
Yes.
Right.
There ended up being some bad soils a couple feet under, some wet areas, so we took out a lot and...
And so that's another question. So when developers or utilities have to go across the road, how do we convince them to go under the road from now on rather than cutting up good road?
So the private utilities, your AT and Ts and Verizons and the gas people and those types, uh, they all get permits from the county. Uh, and in most of those cases, gas, electric, telecom, they, they do bore. They do directional bores underneath. Uh, you, you may encounter some areas, for instance, Geddes Road west of Denton last year with the big Pulte developments. There were some open cuts of the road that could not be avoided. Um, that were done open cut, I should say, and they probably could have been bored.
Was not real good communication under...
Yeah, I, I have a number of really problems. Uh, I was really not thrilled with Denton Road being cut twice, um, three years ago.
So the county approved that? Is that what happened there?
And I had a commitment that they were not gonna do it, and then they did it. So our level of control under, under those, some of those areas is, is not as good as we would like. Uh, but the majority of them is bored. I think when you see those open cuts, those are the ones that are, that really resonate with people, like, why are they doing that?
Right.
And we do fight against those.
And Melissa, for, and it'll be, come up again in our September meeting with Wayne County, is we're not looking to control Wayne County. Just let's communicate so we can communicate with our constituents when things are happening.
Yeah.
There's just one last question. I guess it's concerning to hear the page where you talked about three projects have been canceled or delayed. And, um, especially some, if you look at some of the roads, Sheldon Road, Hanford to Warren, which you hear a lot of complaints about. And so when are we gonna get more details on?
So we've got a meeting set up with the county in September. Uh, there was a document, this, I don't know when, when it was out.
Yeah.
But there is a document that had those three on there as preliminary projects. They were at the top of the list. And then the document that's actually got published from the county for the county projects, they were removed. So we don't have a good answer as to why they were remo, removed. So that's what we're gonna try and nail down in September when we meet with them.
It'll be part of our agenda in September, but in the meantime, Melissa can go back and work the back channels to get...
Right.
...affirmation. So nobody's surprised in September.
Right. And even if they do, you know, have to move it because of weather or whatever, that it's not seen as an addition, I mean, for next year, saying, oh, well, you have these three projects, and we wanna make sure it's...
And that will be our goal, is to get those moved to next year, get those back on the list for next year, because it's too late this year to get those projects probably on the books.
But then we still get our full amount for our other projects from that.
Yeah. Let me touch on that, because this is, this is the moving target that we will always have. And I think our meeting in September with the county, uh, will be revealing, because I hope to have another study session perhaps a month from now, talking about the major roads. And what are our next two years' worth of major road projects? I, I really wanna do Warren between Hagerty and Lily. I, I know they were headed on their schedule for this year. Now, do we wanna do that if they're actually gonna do it next year? So it, it is a little bit of a moving target.
One of the issues we have with Wayne County is we are trying to be proactive and be more long-term in our planning, and we are encouraging and begging them to do the same on their side. And we've gone in and said, here's our open books. And they, there's been meetings where they sit on the other side of the table with, you know, playing that game. So we're, we're working very hard to end that, hopefully in the coming years.
Yeah, so our commissioner can help with that, I'm sure.
I'll try. We'll all work together.
Like I say, we, we've made some progress over the past couple of years though with, with them, you know. I, I...
Thanks.
Relative.
Thank you.
Well, the, uh, citizens of Canton have overwhelmingly approved this millage and that. And I think it's incumbent upon the board to make sure that it's spent wisely. I'm impressed with the overall presentation that you all made and the fact that, uh, we're moving forward. There have been a lot, a lot of work been done this year. Not everything has been completed, but I think what's been done is, is a marked improvement. Uh, so all I can say is keep doing what you're doing. There's gonna be some issues down the road, I'm sure. Projects, as Ken Murray mentioned, which ones do you select? It's more than the phaser, uh, pro, uh, scanning all the roads that come into it. So you gotta do the best you can with what you got and move the, make sure we spend the money wisely on the roads that need to be fixed in Canton. So I appreciate your hard work. It's not the, it's a learning curve for you too, I'm sure. It's a new project, a new phase. You're, you're new to the township, so I'm sure there'll be some other issues coming up, but it's good to see the citizens out interested in how their taxpayer money that they've approved is being spent on the roads. And I, it's gonna, it's gonna work out. It's gonna take some time.
And we'll have a larger program next year.
Yeah.
You know, we'll hopefully have a expanded program.
My, uh, I guess, as we talk about the unmatched portion of the local roads, so we're getting in there, we're working with some of these fixtures, um, you made the comment about we don't know what's underneath there sometimes until we get down there. So we, we go out, we kinda bid the work, we get an idea, at least an estimate of what the cost is gonna be, but, um, all, the, the sum total of the work we're doing, we are lifting off of the back of the county and, um, which is something we decided to do, uh, or at least the electorate of Canton Township decided to do. Uh, but in that instance, so how, how do we, how much of a contingency are we allowing ourselves? Because if we get into a situation where we look underneath a cracked panel and we find out that the fixture's been completely eroded and we have to, we would, I assume at that point, be on the hook for replacing that, maybe filling in some of the, some of the dirt and...
That's the thing. If we open it up and we need to fix something, we wanna fix it right then and there. So the contingency portion, uh, there's, there's, there's two parts to it. When that project was bid with the 17, uh, subdivisions, we had a base number of structures we wanted to fix. We have a map. It's actually in the, uh, on the web. And on top of that, so say we had 50 or 100 structures, I, I can't recall how many there were, then we had a significant contingency built into that contract upwards of more than 10, I think, maybe 20 percent. Then when we awarded that job, uh, about two months ago, we added another 10 percent on top. So we have 30 percent or more available to do work outside. And that includes more concrete that you have to take out, or perhaps having to fix a pipe that's into a manhole and isn't, isn't, is not, is leaking essentially. That's what we find. So, uh, we will learn a lot this year as we go through, especially some of the older subdivisions. We're working north of Ford, and we will adjust that next year. Um, I'm not gonna predict that we won't get through all 17 subdivisions this year, but if, if, if it gets into November and we're halfway through, uh, you know, uh, we will, we will, we will stop that work and we'll continue next year. Uh, so that's just a preview. You know, I, I hope we find a lot of good structures, real straightforward stuff, but we're in 30, 40-year-old subdivisions, you know. So, uh, we'll, we'll certainly update the board come the fall if we don't feel we can get all this work done this year. Uh, but we have next year, you know, and, uh, I don't, I don't want to do that, but I've certainly contemplated that.
And 30 percent is a, is a, a large number to build in as a contingency, but you never know with road projects. Um, so that's very standard to build that in on all of the projects that we'll have moving forward.
There was some talk at one point in time about having an interactive map.
Which is up.
It's up.
Perfect.
Yeah, and it does show some details on each project.
Yeah, so going back to your question earlier in the week, um, Mark supplies us with a, uh, an update every week, and then we go in and we actually update that map on a weekly basis. It happens on Fridays or Thursdays. One or the other.
Whenever it works the best.
Yeah.
You know, whenever we're recording what the contractors are doing.
Residents are looking at it too, because I've heard them say, hey, they're doing this and look at this map.
And that's thanks to Kristi. Kristi is actually updating the map now with the, any of the language that you say. She's not creating the maps, but she's, she's actually doing the, uh, the information, the content.
Okay, so just, I guess, the final comments for myself is the, I attended a regional meeting today that just so happened to have a lot of Canton residents. I was, got a little bit of grief about, you know, condition of some roads. A lot of very happy and pleased customers in terms of Lily Road being completed. Um, and then some complaints about the orange barrels, which is, you know, which is...
We got 18.
Keep doing what you're doing. That's what I say. So the message that I think we're all trying, and Mike's done it several times too, is this is a long-term program. It's not overnight, but, you know, give us eight, 10 years and you're gonna drive around Canton and say, wow, roads aren't too bad.
I think, you know, just coming in, um, newly to this too, that this year and next year are gonna be critical with how these programs roll out and what the next 18 years looks like. I think we're gonna learn a lot over the course of the next two years. And we, even through the bidding process for the matched portion, you know, getting a better relationship with the county, because, I mean, this is not going away. So, um, it's something that we will figure out, and it will, it'll take a couple of construction seasons to do it, but we will get it done. And I think after 2020, you'll see, um, a lot more smoother operations.
And I think we kinda covered the public comment through our question and answer period. So if I may, could I call for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Those, if there are motions presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Have a good night. Be safe.